Gentlemen, let's get going. It started here. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the boys' Board of Commissioners for June. Start with the roll call.
Mr. De Emilio.
Present.
Mrs. Hall?
Here. Thank you so much.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
And Mr. Hyman?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Also here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
And Mr. Wechsler?
Here.
And Mr. Leve?
Here.
We will start with the opening prayer. Father Ryan Whitney from St. George's Church.
Almighty God, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that women and men from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Speaking will be, our first speaker is State Representative Jamie Santore. He'll be talking about traffic light improvements on Westchester Pike, what we're doing to improve the traffic flow along Westchester Pike.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me today. There's a couple initiatives going on on Westchester Pike. PennDOT, I have been working with them. It's Valley Forge Branch, which is in King of Prussia, handles that Westchester Pike corridor. I've had two phone conversations with the engineer as well as the regional director to see what we could do to improve the traffic light flow. So the first thing they're going to do is check all the boxes, make sure the timers are there. The second thing is a little bigger of a program. And then there's also a third piece that I'm going to ask your assistance on. The second piece is I've been talking with traffic engineer who has been involved, and he's willing to sit down with the PennDOT folks, which I am meeting them on Friday the 19th to discuss this. You have two ramps up there entering the northbound lanes of 476. You can only enter the one from heading eastbound on Westchester Pike. The other one says no turns. Yes, some people do use it, but it's not effective enough to release the amount of traffic that's on Westchester Pike in the morning. So the idea would be to take a look at, and they have to do a mini-study. It's not a complex study, and this would happen in Marple Township. And the idea is that the access would allow for two lanes of traffic, so you could use both entrance ramps heading westbound. And a portion of the traffic would be pushed to that second exit ramp, and there would be two lanes of traffic coming right in until the lights, and then get the lights working. So that it's a, it's called a traffic ease, I believe, those signals that allow traffic on and off, and it'll do left lane, right lane. If we can get both of those ramps going, the engineer believes, and again, it's above my pay grade on the technicalities, but it'll release approximately 45 cars in each segment. And what that segment is, I'm not quite sure. And that's what I'm trying to learn more about. The second, so that's the second piece. The third piece is I'm going to ask you to write a letter, and I'm going to ask you to do a resolution to have your township manager write a letter to PennDOT requesting a traffic study again. And during AM peak and PM peak, because it needs to happen. And I will then push it, copy me on the letter, and I'll push it with those folks that this needs to happen, because I experience it myself in the morning, I experience it in the afternoons multiple times a month. And it's horrendous. A 45-minute wait at one time, 30 minutes another time, to get from Manoa Shopping Center to the Blue Route entrance, it's just not acceptable. And he's telling me, well, you just have too many cars on there. And that's when I started going off about the light timing, the second entrance ramp to the Blue Route. So there's things that we're going to look at. And then we've got to look at an overall program for the future, like they did over on Route 1, where every light is timed, and it's a system that's put in place, which we do not have on Route 3. I did confirm that. And it would take us from Upper Darby right through Brumall. So I've talked to Billy Adolf about it. He said he would work with me on it to get it taken look at as part of this transportation. The transportation bill that was passed last year is an ongoing process. It's for five years. The first year's done, but it's a little over 2.3 billion a year for five years. So there's going to be some room, hopefully, that we can pull some projects our way here in Haverford. That one on Route 3 is one of the most important ones. I just feel it's probably our biggest congestion area. Any questions?
Representative, I have a question. I certainly appreciate you doing this and coming. It's long overdue. It's something that certainly I've expressed concern about for a number of years. But also, if there's any way that we can get some funding for the lines or block the box, we have an issue with residents who can't get out of Westgate Hills and the other side of the Pike, because vehicles are blocking access to Westchester Pike.
I'd be glad to bring that up at the PennDOT meeting.
Yes.
I mean, it's a state-owned road, so let's take a look at it.
Thank you.
All right? And I will put that on the list of things to discuss.
Appreciate it.
You're talking again from Lawrence Road right all the way down Westchester Pike till you hit Upper Darby Township? Or are we talking...
I'll let the deputy chief talk about the specific areas. One is Oxford Hill Lane, I believe.
Oxford Hill Lane.
Glenn Gary.
Glenn Gary and Manoa, Westchester.
Right.
So the shopping center district?
From Manoa Road all down.
Okay.
Yes.
Those are the three intersections, yes.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd rather just put it on a list now versus trying to go get funding for it and just push PennDOT to do it.
Very good. Thank you. And there should be, and I, there's going to be changes, and I don't know the details, but of the intersection with the Blue Route with new construction there, and that needs to be coordinated as well, because the Lawrence Road area, and I...
Absolutely. And a lot of that's going to fall on Representative Adolf, because it's going to be in his district, but...
Yeah, that's true. That part of it is.
That part of it is.
Yeah.
The construction is. And then we're going to have the issues with when they do the St. Peter and Paul site, you're bringing in new traffic to the shopping center and residential, depending on how many residences they approve. That could be a significant impact on Lawrence Road, which then, again, that same entrance onto the Blue Route will be impacted. So we've got a lot of things that we've got to look at.
Because Lawrence Road routinely backs up from the Blue, from Westchester Pike to the Linwood School Park to the...
You're talking on the Haverford side.
On the Haverford side.
I'm even talking about more traffic being dumped from the Marple, which is going to make it that much worse. So we've got to get on it ahead of time. Okay. All right?
Anyone else?
Okay.
I know this is off, you know, Westchester Pike, but, and I ask every month, Marple Road, I was on there the other day, it's just, it's beyond belief. Do we have any hope at all of getting it paved? It's intolerable. I know Larry's talked to them, but can you help us with that?
I could try.
Can you try?
It's not my district, but I'd be happy to try.
Can you try to do...
Yep.
We're not getting, we're not getting anything.
The latest we've been told is this summer.
Mr. Santore, there's two roads that have been on the list for PennDOT to pave. One is Marple Road. The other was on Darby Creek Road, and that's been going on two years, and we've seen a little Manoa improvement.
Well, Earl needs to be done, but Earl's not on the list.
Yeah, but the only two that they're doing in Haverford this year supposedly are those two, which we were told they were doing last year, and then they were told us we were doing it in the spring. Now we're told the summer, and they are undrivable.
They are.
Literally undrivable. It's like going through landmines.
You got it. I will reach out to Representative Adolf, because I know part of that's in his district as well.
Yes.
And can be very influential. I will, I believe he was influential in getting them to commit to doing the part of it. So we'll get, I'll talk to him about getting the rest.
It's supposed to be done all the way from 320 to Darby Road.
To Darby Road.
Commissioner Hall is so right. That is an accident waiting to happen. Someone's going to lose their life on that road. Yeah, well, we've, so... I can't tell you how many calls I get about people who've had car damage, because it's in my ward.
Again, you know what? I'm happy to help Haverford Township. It's not in my district, but not a problem.
Thank you.
We thank you for that.
Absolutely.
We know you're not, but thank you so much.
Next on the list is Larry Gentile. You want to talk about new equipment?
Certainly, yeah. Mr. Leve, as you are well aware, this board approves thousands of dollars each year for new equipment to service the residents of the community all too often. And again, that's my neglect. I fail to mention when this equipment arrives, what it's used for, how it's used. Two pieces, important pieces of equipment had just arrived recently. One of them, this particular vehicle, you're looking at the picture right now, is our, from our sewer department, is a specialized camera truck. This is the second one in the township that we purchased within the last, the one that we replaced was about 12 years old. This just arrived. It was ordered in the beginning of the year. The cost to the residents, again, is $130,000. This vehicle is used each and every day, eight hours a day, and even times on the weekends. And it's a specialized vehicle, that it has camera equipment, such as this particular unit right here. Comes with different wheels, has thousands of feet of cabling. It actually is connected right into the vehicle, and this is the back of the vehicle, and this is like a workstation. It's computerized. And here's the onboard computer that the video records it. So this can not only visualize the existing pipes, and not only in our sewer system, but our storm system as well. It's been used there. Years ago, before I was in public service, Mr. Penone reminded me that when there was a potential break in a sanitary or storm line, they had to use best guess and open up sometimes half of the road, costing thousands and thousands of dollars worth of unnecessary damage that erodes and repairs. This particular equipment can pinpoint a break within inches, therefore, you know, saving taxpayers' dollars, as well as it records, we do daily inspections of our systems, and we actually were able to see damage or damaged pipe, and we can replace it before we actually have backups and further problems. So these are just a couple quick photos of what the vehicle looks like inside and out. And lastly, this is another vehicle that we recently received that will be in service within the next few days, and it's a miniature recycling trash truck that was purchased. The good news about this is the funds that we receive grants back from our recycling efforts and our green initiatives help pay for this vehicle. The cost of this vehicle was approximately $120,000. We received a $119,000 grant, so the cost of this vehicle to the residents was really a thousand dollars. So these two pieces of equipment came in. I'll try to make it a regular report to the board once specialized equipment like this arrives, so everyone knows how it's being used and where their tax dollars are going. Thank you.
Next, we have the township auditor update. Gary Slotting.
Evening. I've reviewed the disbursements for the period commencing May 12, 2015, and ending June 9, 2015. I raised certain questions with the township's finance director. All those questions were answered to my satisfaction. Therefore, in my opinion, there were no irregularities in the disbursements. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. Now we're going to Citizens Forum. We have the registered speakers first. We'll start with Mike Levin. Just want to remind everybody to stay to three minutes, because we have a long agenda, so we want to make sure we respect everybody's time.
Stormwater issues have been very much on my mind this week, particularly after I saw the agenda for this meeting. So I'd like to, I'd like to tell you that I'm going to discuss very briefly items 10 to 16, which all seem to have a stormwater component in. You probably know we have an aging and obsolete infrastructure for stormwater. This creates problems in being plugged at times, as well as too small to carry the water. The revenue from this are only properties which are taxable. For openers, I'd like to suggest that there be some alternative funding, and at the present time, according to what I have heard from you, $8 million is needed from the general fund at this point, and various fees and grants as well. The sources of funding are general fund, property values, onsite management credits, contribution to runoff, and treatment option considerations. We have a township which is, which is developing from 1940s and 1950s, houses on single lots, to some developments which are putting two houses on one lot, and they're bigger. Stormwater ordinance should be revised to take into account public health, welfare, safety, runoff, impervious surfaces, and the conceptual designs should be brought in for 2.5, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storm length. I have seen this brought in for other townships within the area in which we live. Reduced flow, minimal flow reduction, reasonable control and balance of undetained watershed, that is, the portion of it which cannot be flood-controlled. Now, according to what I read in your agenda for this meeting, approximately $1,565,000 and 940 is the total, for which about $1 million of this is probably considerably less than may be available from grants. Item number 10 covers the sewer line and open easement channel on County Line Road. I'm not sure what that is, and I haven't seen a report on it. This Chatham Park Underground Detention Facility, I haven't seen that, nor has, is there an idea of how much it's going to detain? $250,000 for each of two properties at 224 Foster Avenue and 328 Foster and 328 Spring Road are also in the, are in this proposal.
Your three minutes are up.
I'd like to take, I'd like to query the time more, just to finish this page, please.
Hurry up, please. Thank you.
Those two probably seem to have some creative implications. They're also being put out for grants. You have an economic development consultant, which is on the table. Plus, the streetscape on County Line Road, but there have been no plans that have been submitted to this that I have seen. And now we have $428,000 going through Manoa Road to the YMCA. I suggest if you are retaining an economic development consultant, one of the first questions that should be asked is, is economic development feasible? And what is it? The second question is, if you're going to retain him, why do you want to strangle him initially by passing these other ordinances? The proposals require a complete written report. There's no question about that, with calculations, so that someone doesn't have to ask have the calculations been done. Let's see them. Method of determination are missing in written grants. Advisory and contritoring meetings, such as one which takes up these various issues, should be presented. This is something that all of the committees within the township, zoning, planning, mental advisory, public works, and others, community development should be involved in, because right now, stormwater planning is in a stage where, oh, it's a couple of commissioners gathering, getting together and deciding, oh, well, let's bring this up in a meeting, and it gets passed. I don't think you want the stormwater, the stormwater issues to be centered that way. I think they should be centered within a committee. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Next, Thomas B. Ellie.
Good evening. My name is Thomas B. Ellie. I live on Washington Avenue at the 600 block.
What's your address? What is the address?
688 Washington Avenue. It was actually, I came here tonight, and I called to be put on the list about the Haverford 7 LLC project, to see if there was any updates since teams' construction stopped about three weeks ago after a meeting with Representative Vitale, members of the EPA, members of the...
DEP.
Pennsylvania, correct. There hasn't been too much progress down there since then, with the exception of a fence and some more dirt moved around. And I was surprised there was no one there from the township, and no one here from this board either, Mr. McGarrett included. This is in your ward. And I was wondering if there's been any updates since then, progress is, and what the next steps are.
Yeah, we can answer that after, after we're done.
Thank you.
Thomas Booth?
Thomas Booth, 540 Washington Ave., Haverford. I'm down the block from the Haverford 7 project now. Tom, just reiterated something I was going to ask, where we stand right now, what's happening with the process of the job. They stand still. There's been some issues with the creek. I did stop today to talk to the people on Eagle Road with the cleaning plant for the creek for Naylor's Run. There seems to be a foul odor coming from the creek. I know we had a fish kill back three weeks ago. Not saying it's coming from that property, I don't know. I know we have a storm drain on that property that has leaked runoff into it. It's fractured. It was capped by the EPA. There is still runoff getting into the creek, because I think it's fractured further than where it's been repaired. There has been a fish kill. I think the EPA came out and did look at it. Whether the water's been tested since then, I don't know. I am concerned that the water or something's going on with that. We spent so much money bringing it back to life, and it has come back to life. I played in the creek when it was probably when you shouldn't back in the 60s, and it's safe now. I mean, it's clean, clean water, but the presence of no fish at all right now, there's no fish, nothing, no activity at all. I mean, I go down there every morning just to see if anything's alive. There is some wildlife, but the fish are gone. The water smells again. Not oily, but it's a concern. I did bring up the Tetra Tech at the pump house on Eagle Road. They're going to look into it. And back to Harvard, the project, they pumped all those footings out where the oil contaminants were supposedly installed, testing is going on. They pumped it back onto the ground. There was four foot of water, three to four foot of water in these footings, that they pumped physically back onto the ground. Now, whether that got back into the creek, I don't know. That would be the right way to do it. Should have been pumped off-site, let it go back into the ground and fold it back into the creek. It could be on-site. But we're just hungry to know what's going on with the project.
Okay.
And if it's safe.
Okay, we can, we'll answer everybody's question when we're done. Okay? David Freed?
David Freed, 548 Washington. Just following these gentlemen up with the same situation. Just, you know, it's a difficult, you know, I know there was issues, you know, with the meeting we all had on the site, which kind of happened organically, I guess is the best way to say it. I think we're all unclear on the process of how best to communicate. You know, we've made some offerings to Vitale's office and anybody else involved, and there's, you know, over-the-fence conversations with the builders, and really, there's no animosity. It's just more real concern, you know, because between the odors and just the way this has evolved with them breaking ground and then literally oil coming up. And, you know, I think right now, there could be good things happening, but there seems to, you know, and we're open to hear, maybe there's a communication process that, you know, is normal policy or something, but we need to do something, you know? And it's just concerning, especially as Mr. Booth said, with this last rain last week, what was capped, there's a pipe from where the excavation was plugged and where there was oil. Now, the rain was taking, you know, and whether the degree of petroleum or whatever's in it is hard to tell, and I don't know if it was tested, but it should be tested, because it's now going into the creek, which we all thought was really never going to happen, you know? So besides that, just what we've discovered, you know, the property to be in the past anyway. So open to communication, process on communication, you know, whatever you have to offer is better than what we are right now. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. On agenda items, that's for the registered speakers. On agenda items, anybody on this side would like to speak on agenda items? First row? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? On this side? First row? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? Okay. On the, you want to...
Yeah, I can very quickly try to address some of Dr. Levin's questions. The, some of the items that you talked about, Dr. Levin, as you are, this board has been discussing stormwater improvements, and that's why some of the grants are on tonight's agenda and will be continued to discuss for months to come, I'm sure. But number 10, where you said the sewer lines, just make some very brief, it's going to be discussed at the, during tonight, that the Commissioners want to go to vote on this. But that's an existing sewer improvements and open easements that was the Quarry LP did for the township when they were doing the improvements. We're just taking the ownership of that back to the township. They've already implemented the improvements, and they saved the township. Did you save, Lori, about a half a million dollars, at least? The three grants, items number 12, 13, and 14, these are grants that were being submitted with our township engineer. Again, this is only a grant at this particular time. There will not be any mathematical formulas or anything like that until once these grants are approved, and then we have to submit formal work to improve, to make these improvements. Once that is, if we get those grants, and again, that's if we get the grants, then the engineer will conduct more of his engineering skills and doing the mathematics, so on and so forth. The economic development consultant, that's an HR issue, again, that'll be discussed tonight. The streetscape is CDBG funds. It's not township funds. That's the same project that we did for Manoa Road around to the Westgate, Brookline Boulevard, and Lancaster Avenue. We do that every year, and that's a community block grant funds, and that's what that's going to be. So basically, we're going to be redoing the curbing, the sidewalks, new antique lighting, and making some storm improvement there as well. But again, again, that's saving the taxpayers some funds. And the Manor Road, the 428,000, or the Manoa Road to the YMCA, that's a trail, and again, that's a grant from Delaware Valley Regional Planning, and I believe that grant is somewhere in the area, about $420,000. So again, not all of this is being paid by the township. So we'll discuss more of it tonight as the board goes to vote on these items.
Okay.
You want Dave to address the...
No, we can, the McCannus property? Dave, you want to address that? Lori? Yeah, no, Dave can...
Certainly, certainly good questions from the residents. The, so let me, let me just back up a little bit on the history of the site, just to remind everybody, because I had to get, those are questions, I certainly get back on my own file. And in 2002, the property's privately owned. In 2002, the property owners at the time, McCannus, Robert Mandell, McCannus Fuel, had what's called an Act Two acceptance letter by the DEP that essentially, in layman's terms, says the site's been cleaned up to a reasonable residential standard, and we, we, the DEP, the state of Pennsylvania who monitors and regulates this, accept that. Also goes on to state that should additional, really, for the most part, it's heating oil. Should additional heating oil, number two fuel oil be encountered, obviously, it has to be addressed with the proper procedures and requirements to remediate. In, in 2012, I believe, at the nudging of the township and Lori's office, DEP sort of revisited the file because land development was becoming obvious, and DEP and their storage tank program revisited the file and said, yeah, everything's up to date and everything makes sense. So then, as the, as the property's being developed in accordance with the approved plans, issues came up, good questions, right? Contamination was found, not unusual, not unexpected, right? It's a contaminated site. The DEP monitors, regulates, controls are good at it. It's what they're there for. Not to minimize this, like, it's very important, it's right in a residential area. DEP also deals with 300 acre brownfield sites. I mean, this, this is what they do and what they do well. So, off of that came the meeting that I think Mr. Freed referred to on, on the 15th, and I guess the biggest question I heard was communication and how, and how it's happening. And off of that meeting, Pat Patterson, I don't know if anybody knows Pat Patterson, that's a DEP's government liaison, I know him personally, Delaware County guy, good guy, real nice person, sent an email to Mr. Freed, copied Lori, copied Cosmos' video. He's the head of DEP. By coincidence, I met with today to talk about a few issues. Topper copied Mr. Vitale, Representative Vitale's office, and indicated that, look, there was a meeting on the 15th. Off of that meeting, the property owner has to do a site characterization report, which means as they remediate, they also have to report on what they're doing. That has to be, what has to be submitted to the DEP within 180 days. The DEP then acts on and reviews that report and make sure the site is being remediated, the additional contamination is found is being remediated properly. As they're, as concurrent with doing the report, they are doing, understand they're doing some remediation. And again, the DEP monitors it and oversees it. That's, that's what they do. That's what they're good at. The last thing the report talks about is that as additional information becomes available, the DEP via Pat Patterson will make that information available to Mr. Vitale's office and to the township. That's the last piece of information we have.
We, we had that discussion earlier today. That's made available to, by Greg Vitale's office because it is, the DEP gives that information to, to Greg Vitale. It's not the township doing it. It is the state doing it, so it goes through the representative's office or through the DEP website.
And that's what his note says.
It should be on the website somewhere.
The DEP's website, state DEP's website, or Greg Vitale's website. I know Greg does a, an email. He could probably put it out for that.
Well, there's nothing else on there.
We're not taking questions from?
Do we, do we go ahead and the afterwards with the non-rates?
Yep, sure, sure. We'll be, we'll answer. Is there anything else?
That was already for me. If the board has any questions.
Of course you can ask a question.
Mr. Pinoni, what happened with, I had people send me pictures of the fish. Do we have any conclusion on that?
No, I know Lori's, I don't want to speak for, I know the agency investigated it, know that the people that investigate fish kills all the time at DEP, and I believe EPA went out and investigated. We have not heard anything definitive on what the fish kill was from. I saw, in fact, you and I saw the pictures at the same time.
We did.
Yep, yep. We have not heard anything definitive on, on what caused the fish kill.
Okay, so I guess that'll be in the report as well?
I, I don't believe, I wouldn't assume it's in a report associated with the site. I would, I would think we'll get some information disseminated to the township and the residents.
Well, it seemed like it was upstream a little bit and not necessarily that, that's what I think the confusion was.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I'd say, look, my, my civil engineering observation of it, it does make the two are connected.
Okay.
But, but look, I'm not a fish kill expert, so I don't want to, I don't want to misrepresent. But you got a site here and you got a fish kill upstream, it doesn't seem too logical that it was
Right.
... associated with the site.
Okay.
Dave, so, so I understand this correctly, this, there should be a sense of urgency. Is the DEP looking at it? I mean, from what I'm hearing from these residents, I mean, there's, there are odors coming out of the, of the creek? Why is, is the DEP moving on this, or do we need to push Greg a little bit, or?
Certainly doesn't hurt. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
Lori. Get the gloss up. Come on.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to step in for just a minute. The property was a former fuel depot. The site was remediated under an Act Two cleanup because they had a spill at the site. There were a number of samples that were taken at the time before the project was closed out. Then again, there was a sample, a sampling of the soils, a Phase Two report done before the last developer bought it, and they looked to see if they could find any contamination. And the areas that they punched, punched holes in the ground and tested the soils there, they found none. Now, there was also a railroad trussel there, and there were some other improvements. And when those improvements were removed from the site and the site was disturbed, not surprisingly, there was an area of contamination found. So far, it appears to be an isolated area. It doesn't, we don't think that it's gone anywhere else. I've had a number of conversations with Rich Rupert from EPA, who was the gentleman who investigated originally. DEP handles these things. EPA went out, and only because it's downstream of the Superfund site, they wanted to test to make sure that whatever was going on out there wasn't related to the Superfund activities. And so, they did some air quality sampling, they did some soil sampling, they ran some numbers, they went back, they double-checked it, and it looked like nothing. And in fact, Rich Rupert told me he thought that maybe there was a quart of oil in the one excavation. There was rain, oil floats on top of water, and so, it looked like much ado about nothing, to be perfectly honest, to be.
Mr. Rupert also left saying he had a headache from the odors. Mr. McGarry, no one's heard from you at all.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Hold on, please.
You're a civil engineer, so I can interrupt there. Mr. McGarry, why is?
No, you can't. You can't.
You can't.
I did.
No, we, we won't have that. Please.
So, so the reality is that DEP now handles this. It's not part of the Superfund activity, it's DEP. And just like any other Act Two cleanup, it's going to go through that process. DEP handles it, Havreford Township does not. It's not a township issue. The township isn't involved in the cleanup. The township does not do the reviews, as Mr. Pinoni pointed out. That's not our area of expertise. That's what DEP does, and they do it quite well, and they do it on much larger sites. So, they've been involved in this, and they are now going to continue. The work that's, that's underway now is going to be doing some sampling to do a site characterization. And that's where they are right now. That's what's required. I'm not sure why the developer has stopped everything at this point. That's a question for the developer. But the, there isn't any kind of an order from EPA or DEP at this point other than to get this, these tests done. If, I believe that the developer is going to go ahead and do some additional excavation for some additional testing.
All right, so we don't know why he stopped.
Well, well.
We have no idea.
We found, we found.
But we could, we could contact.
Contamination was encountered, right? And it's a procedure to, when it's encountered. Whether it's encountered on that property, my property, any private property in, I mean, in the state of Pennsylvania, there's a procedure to file. But the developer goes and notifies DEP, and he begins to remediate that contamination. And, and that, and Lori says very well, that's the procedure to these, that developer is in right now. Find it, isolate it, stockpile it, cover it, remove it, is that okay? And a way to do that. Now, put in perspective, by the way, 900, 900 tons were removed from this site back in 2002. So, it was, what, what's been found now, Lori's right, it's dwarfed by what was found and remediated in '02.
Okay. All right.
That, I'm sorry, see, does that answer, kind of look like it, like it doesn't answer your question.
Yeah, I, I don't, Mr. Pinoni, I mean, I think what, the concern here is that whether or not 90 tons were taken out, people are concerned about the lack of information. I don't think people understand the relationship between the DEP and us and whether or not, you know, that it really is out of our jurisdiction. But more than anything, it sounds like people are concerned about, about a safety issue.
That's a good point. I tried to explain that. I mean, that's, 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 that's not to put any on Pat Patterson, again, he's a real gentleman. That's, that's that note he sent out on June 1st to Mr. Freed and Mr. Vitale's office, is we're going to be disseminating information as soon as there's updates. And it was a good note. I mean, it was well-written, and I thought it was pretty good. It seems pretty clear.
I, I never saw the note, but I'm just, to share.
Okay.
I guess the point I'm trying to make, I want these gentlemen to understand that the board cares about what's going on. It's not my ward, it's not in some of the other wards, and I'm sure Commissioner McGarry cares. And the concern you raise concerns us, I believe. And we want to ensure that, we want to ensure that everything is safe for you, the residents that are living there. We want to ensure that there is nothing additionally going on, that we don't know about, that for the reasons that the developer stopped his project. We don't know if somebody reached out to him to tell him the way, or?
We, we know why he stopped the project. He, there was, yeah, they found something.
Well, they only found a little bit of oil.
He, he called the DEP when he, when he found it. DEP came out and they, they're isolating and they're, they're testing.
They're remediating.
And remediating.
Okay, so he's stopping because of that?
That's why he stopped, yes.
Right now?
He has to.
He's not doing anything because of that. That's clear, right?
I, I, I can't tell you that he's not allowed to go on the other side of the site and put sanitary sewer in, but in that area where the contamination is, he has to remediate.
I can tell you, we talked a mistake.
We could, we could have the discussion after the, the.
The other issue is you guys are doing the right, or the nature trail.
I'm sorry, we have to have, we have to do this after the.
It affects the property as well, and well, that.
We gotta, we have to have this discussion later. In the, after the meeting's over, you can have the thing. We, we can.
How did that since the 15th of May, we'll have it later.
He has explained, look, he's explained the whole process.
The problem, the land's a mess, and no one's doing it.
Okay. The DEP is doing something. They're out, they're out remediating the site.
The approvals to the, you have oil.
We, we're not going to.
How does it get that far? That's what I don't understand. Why are we having the conversation now that the DEP is looking into it when you can have people living in those houses by laboring? How does it get that far? How does it?
He has to stop. He has to stop doing what he's doing. That's it. Will not happen anymore.
I think this meeting will be after we have the regular meeting. Can we get through the regular meeting and then let's meet right after this meeting here?
Okay. Thank you.
We can meet down there. We can meet down there this evening tomorrow morning, or that every day.
The next issue right now is the meeting. Let's take care of that.
We have to, we have to move on. We have to move on. Approval of minutes?
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 11, 2015.
Second.
Question made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
I'm going to abstain because I was not at that meeting.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Well, I read the minutes and, yes.
And Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Even though I wasn't there.
Number seven, approval of warrants?
Mr. President, I move that we approve warrant number six, 2015, in the amount of $3,192,650.82, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for May 7, 2015, in the amount of $604,155.26. The general sewer fund payroll for May 21, 2015, in the amount of $664,027.57. The general fund disbursements, number six, of 2015, in the amount of $1,046,254.10. Sewer fund disbursements, number six, of 2015, in the amount of $789,076.82. Community development block grant fund dispersment, number six, of 2015, in the amount of $50,815.43. The home grant fund, number six, of 2015, in the amount of $20,422.50. The capital projects fund dispersment, number six, of 2015, in the amount of $14,102.80. Credit card statement ending May 6 of 2015, in the amount of $303.49. And a credit card statement ending May 27 of 2015, in the amount of $3,492.85.
Second. Question made and seconded?
Mr. President, our township auditor has gone through these warrants. Any questions that he has raised with the finance director have been answered to his satisfaction. I recommend that we approve these warrants.
Any else? The other? Okay, please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Number eight.
Chairman. I'd like, signed code amendment, second reading, to adopt the second reading of orders, number P 11 215, by repealing Chapter 154 signs, amending Chapter 182 zoning by adding a definition for off-premises advertising signs at 182-106B, and amending various provisions of Section 182 701 signs.
Second.
Question made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Number nine, ordinance number P 12 2015.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P 12 2015, amending and supplementing Chapter 182 zoning by revising provisions for accessory structures.
Second.
Question made and seconded. We had a lot of discussion on this at work session. Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?[1641.88]
within an easement area, and authorizing a sanitary sewer and open channel easement agreement on a property located at 116 West Township Line Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania.
Second. Question made and seconded. This again is the, what we discussed at the work session.
This is a, we're taking, the quarry owners made about a half million dollars of improvements to improve the stormwater flow through the creek area there. And we're taking ownership back after the improvements. It was, this was an agreement that was done years ago that we would take it back, and we're just complying with that contract.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Next, number 11, ordinance number P 15 2015. Mr. Siegel?
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P 15 2015, authorizing the grant of an easement to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency upon certain lands of the township of Haverford.
Second.
Question made and seconded?
Sorry, who seconded that?
Commissioner Wexler.
Commissioner, what is this figurating here?
Oh, excuse me.
Well, it's granting an easement to the Environmental Protection Agency and the Army Corps of Engineers for their activities on the YMCA and the PCP site. It allows them access to it to do whatever they have to do.
Is this the one that we've been working on this for a year? Is that the one?
It is.
Okay.
Is that the one? I didn't hear.
We've been working on it for a year. Been working for that easement.
Okay, I got it.
So they can test for...
Five minutes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Number 12, resolution number 1977 2015.
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt resolution number 1977 2015, designating Lawrence G. Gentile Township Manager as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Commonwealth Finance Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining a flood mitigation program grant in the amount of $500,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the construction of an underground retention facility at the Chatham Park Elementary School.
Second.
Question made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to say Chris worked very hard on this.
Yeah, he did. Would you like to talk about it?
Mr. Penotti?
Of course.
Yeah.
What did you do all briefly, because we already briefed them.
Great, great. I think, I guess Mr. Levin had a question actually on all three of them. If the board members had a meeting back, public meeting at the middle school, where a state of Pennsylvania representative came down, a DCED person who helped administer grants, Larry and I have worked with him to identify those grants that we think would help us to mitigate the flooding issues that we experience in the Chatham Glen area. So we've identified with the help of the state, three funded grants that we could have a possibility of getting. You know, we don't want to prepare 20 grant applications and put that expense in. So this first one, the flood mitigation program, which is $500,000 grant, and it all matches, is for, would be for an underground stormwater management facility at the Chatham Glen Elementary School. By my words and your math, Larry's already run that improvement by his counterpart at the school district, who certainly seems receptive to it.
We have a verbal commitment from Mr. Gray. We're still going to need written support and resolution from the school board. That has not come yet.
The grant, we got a certain amount of requirements. Dr. Levin's concerned about empirical data. There is a certain amount required with the grant, but certainly not a full-blown design. We don't want to be spending that kind of money until we find out if we're getting the grant, as Larry mentioned. So that's the first one that would go to help mitigate during heavy rain events, the Chatham Glen area. The second two are both greenways trails and recreation grants, again, working with the DCED rep, who's been very helpful. The first one is for property at 224 Foster Avenue, which is experiences problems during our heavy intense rain events. This grant, the second grant, would be to remove the property, remove the structure from the property, and convert the property to a community use. At this point, it's identified, frankly, as a dog park, and a community dog park. The third one is to, for the property on Spring...
328 Spring.
Spring Road, right, Mr. Daley's. And that would be a similar, again, working with the DCED. As we all remember, as the board might remember, that's actually where the original spring went through, that property. And when it rains heavy, that's where the spring, the stream wants to go again. And this would be to remove the structure, to help mitigate that issue, install stormwater management facilities on that property, and to maintain them. So we actually are presenting that as a little bit maybe even of a flagship educational type facility, too, because it'll be right in the community and it'll be visible. Would require a little bit ongoing maintenance, which Larry and I have talked about. So there are the three grants.
So, just so people understand, rather than, what we're doing now, rather than making pipes bigger, carrying more water downstream, is we're trying to retain the water where it falls. And this is what, this is what this is all about. A retention basin over at Chatham Park School, a retention basin at those two locations.
Yep, yep. And remove structures out of harm's way.
Right.
Just as important. Maybe every bit is important. So Commissioner D'Amelio, Mr. Leavitt is exactly right. It's in lieu of opening up a big hole in the ground and working really close to people's houses, and taking the water from here to here, which would be significantly more, we're trying to mitigate in smaller pieces and remove some of the structures out of harm's way. And one last note, and I'm going to jump down to one of the contracts, same thing on the County Line Road with the grants, with the CDBG monies. Larry and I talked about, we're putting some green infrastructure into that project, some planners and stuff like that, it's kind of stuff that we're starting to see in a lot of somewhat urban areas. And that's upstream of Pont Redding and Winfield Drive, which also has some of its issues. So, none of them are, none of these things are so big that they're going to take care of it all by itself. But again, a piece here, a piece here, a piece here, and a piece there, all upstream of where our problem areas are.
Right, exactly. And that's where we're having the problems down in your area. We're trying to stop the water before it gets to that location.
Hold it back and reduce it.
Mr. Penotti, what are the timelines on the grants?
The three that we're looking at tonight are due on June 30. That's what the resolutions are on tonight. The next month, you'll see another resolution. It's actually for the...
Multimodal.
Yeah, multimodal, which we're going to, Larry and I will give you a little more detail on that. But there'll be a fourth one that'll come in with the multimodal next month.
Transportation.
And that's due on July 30. Yeah, it's transportation money. That's due July 31st.
So if they're due, then what's your anticipation in terms of funding or approval?
I believe we typically hear from them late fall, whether or not they're successful.
Okay. Thank you.
There'll be 2016 projects in terms of implementation. So I'm obviously a little easier to implement than the others.
Thank you.
We do have letters of support from Congressman Patman. We have letters of support from Representative Greg Vitale. And we even have a letter of support from County Council President Marius Saver.
Thanks, Chris.
This is in response to the, the one plan, as you know, was like $4 million to put that tube through. And this is in response to, the more we hold, the better chances are the grants, and the less we have to pay out.
Right. All right. Any other discussion? Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Number 13, resolution number 1978 2015.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 1978 2015, designating Lawrence J. Gentile Township Manager as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the acquisition of property at 224 Foster Avenue, and the redevelopment of the parcel into a community dog park.
Second. Question made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Number 14, resolution number 1979 2015.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 1979 2015, designating Lawrence J. Gentile Township Manager as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the acquisition of property at 328 Spring Road, and the redevelopment of the parcel into an educational stormwater facility.
Second.
Question made and seconded? Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Number 15, authorization. Commissioner Hall?
Motion to authorize the township manager to enter into an agreement with Johnson Controls Plymouth Meeting, PA, for a temporary cooler in the amount of $23,391, submitting the lowest responsible proposal.
Second.
Second.
The board knows this is in response to the HVAC system at the library that has failed in the last few weeks. And our township manager, Larry Gentile, and Christine Ferris have worked through responsible bids for temporary cooling, and then for the installation of a new water-cool chiller, which is on the next item, in order to eliminate the problem and also be a system that can move into the renovation for the library. So it took a little extra time in order to do the due diligence on particular projects, so that we don't do the HVAC system twice.
And this is all part of the $500,000 that we had set aside for emergency?
That's right. Emergency repairs to the library.
All right. Any other discussion? Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Motion to authorize the township manager to enter into an agreement with Johnson Controls Plymouth Meeting, PA, to purchase a 90-ton York Water Cool Chiller in the amount of $71,987, submitting the lowest responsible proposal.
Second.
Commissioner Hall? Any discussion? Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Business Development Coordinator/Consultant?
Yes. Motion to authorize the township manager to hire an economic development consultant for a period of 12 months, which we do need to change...
To six months.
To six months, so that we fall within the budget constraints of the township.
Okay, so that's six months, not the 12 months.
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Wexler?
And we would like to submit a name for the economic development consultant that we have recommended to the Board of Commissioners.
And this is recommended by?
This is recommended by the Economic Development Committee, which is comprised of Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Connell, Commissioner Hall, and Commissioner Wexler. And we met and interviewed three candidates for this position. And then we checked references and did speak with them with additional questions. And this is a position that we've come together as a board, that we feel we need to have a consultant at this juncture that can approach the business districts and take a look at some of the items that need to be addressed between the township and the business district, so that we can move forward and try to address certain problems that we have. We have very specific business districts that need facade grants and different attention that we're unable to give at this time. So we feel that if we have a point person on staff, and this is a part-time, very small step toward getting the right person in place, and we believe that this person can take us to that place and decide how deep we go into this and what we need, and he'll be able to analyze and come back to us and let us know what we have to do in order to have an economic development consultant, which most townships do have. So I think it's good for all the business districts. I think it's good for this board and for the township administrative staff that does an outstanding job every day in this township to do everything they can with all the businesses. But we do feel as a board that we need a little additional help in that department.
Okay, you want to tell us who that is?
So we have decided to go with Graham Copeland, Downtown Dynamics. He has an extensive background, including revitalization in Old City, Upper Dublin, and many other places around that we have spoken with for references.
Okay, so thank you for the recommendation. And we can, any discussion?
Yeah, I was going to, there's another reason why an economic development consultant is a good idea. It will remove, I mean, as well as this board acts as a board that worries about the township more than it worries about its own particular, you know, each commissioner worrying about its own particular ward, having one point person gives that person the political independence to really come up with what might be the best plans and the best thing to move on first. And it just eliminates from any consideration of any subcommittee here, any ward-specific concerns, and instead really thinks about the township as a whole. I think that kind of political insulation is very important for the person who's going to be the point person for us, dealing with the business community and these kinds of plans. So another reason why this is a good idea, and it will pay for itself, whether it's in the form of grant money in advance that could help fund this, or whether it's just in the form of the economic, the development that will come, and the tax and the revenue that will follow, that kind of success. So I think it's a very important program for us to consider. And all of the candidates were excellent, but it is the recommendation of our subcommittee that we go with Downtown Dynamics.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we call a roll.
Jane, good job.
Yeah, excellent work.
Thank you.
Excellent work by the group.
Bravo.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
And Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.
Contract awards, County Line Road Streetscape. Commissioner Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we award the County Line Road Streetscape contract to premier concrete of Brumall, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $139,415, submitting the lowest responsible bid, and contingent upon their execution of the contract and supply of the required bonds and insurance.
Second.
Very good contractor.
Okay, motion made and seconded?
This is long-awaited improvements to the County Line Road corridor of the 6th Ward. I appreciate Township Manager Gentile's efforts, along with all of his staff, to make this Streetscape project, to make it happen. And please accept my thanks on my own behalf and on behalf of all the residents of the 6th Ward.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so we can call a roll? Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Leavitt?
Yes.[1566.33]
Yes. The Newtown Trail 3?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm gonna make a motion to table this one for now.
Can you read this out?
Uh, yeah, you have to read it out.
Read it out, okay. Motion to award Newtown Trail 3 contract to Gesser Construction Company Media PA in the amount of $428,565, submitting the lowest responsible bid and contingent upon their execution of the contract and supply of the required bonds and insurance.
Second.
I move we table.
Second.
Okay, second to table. Please call a roll? Oh, yeah, we can, we can just do a voice vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? There being none, motion passes. Okay. Now we will continue the citizens' forum. Would you like to come up and speak?
I think, I think I've spoken.
Just come, come around.
This way the people home can see you.
Yeah. And we can answer, we can answer your questions. This is the time where we can answer your questions, okay?
Well, I guess the last question, I'm sorry, Thomas Biely, just continuing the questions from earlier. I guess my concern aside from, as Commissioner D'Amelio mentioned, was the communication or lack thereof from, you know, the Township and the board, no one really knows what's going on. Raises other issues as to how does it get this far? And no one knows what's going on. Now, you know, I hear members of the Township speak of X amount of tons removed 13 years ago, but problem seems to still persist. And absent the meeting three to four weeks ago, you'd have seven families living there within the next 16 to 90 days. Who knows what would happen to those families down the road if this stuff ever comes up through the ground any further? I'm just wondering, aside from the lack of communication, which, which we obviously know is an issue that needs to be discussed, but what can we do in the future to prevent it from getting to this point at the next development? I mean, the footings were dug. We've had nice weather. Kids will be playing in those backyards again come Labor Day, and I don't want to see that happen again. It also goes to the trail that, I saw you tabled that, this trail's used by a lot of kids. These kids run up and down that trail from Mano Road, either they're going to the middle school, going to the high school, or on their way to the YMCA. It passes within, I don't know, gentlemen, three feet of the construction project. I don't know what they're bringing into their backyards, into their houses. I don't know how far this goes. So I guess really what, what I'm looking for and what the other, other residents of Washington Avenue have come knock on my door and asked me what I thought of the situation and how I might be able to help them get some answers is, what, what can we do now, immediately, for this project? Not, not taking shots or anything, but waiting 180 days that they might do some remediation that, because that's what the state does? Well, that's great. What happens in 181 days if there's nothing done? Because I'll tell you what, the price they paid for that track of land, the amount of remediation that might seem to be needed, this might be a project they walk away from. I don't know. What happens then? Not the Township's problem, is it? It's my problem, it's Dave's problem, it's Tom's problem, because we live there. And our kids are back there. And my family walks down that trail to go to the Y. And my kids go through there to go to the middle school, every day. And they smell it, and I smell it. I'll propose, huh?
Okay.
I don't want anything further.
Okay. Lori? Lori?
Seventh.
Seven.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Just a couple of things, I hope I got all, try to go through those. Lack of communication, I think we talked about that. Do you need to create a note from the DEP to one of the residents in the state ref in the Township? So the latest communication came not, not more than a week ago. Just to put in perspective, seven families couldn't be in there in 90 days. I mean, even, even if this job is 100 miles an hour, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get seven houses built in 16 to 90 days. I don't, I don't, I don't even tell brothers does that.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I figured seven houses, I figured they were identical to poor footings in early May, they're gonna be people there by some time. So anyway, wheel car.
To, to the question to prevent the next time again, I, I feel a little bit of a sense, look, if there's a, if, if you've, if you've got a concern about the way it's this state of Pennsylvania ministers things through Act Two, it's Act Two, the State of Pennsylvania.
Act Two, Act Two was 13 years ago. We've gone all past that.
No, 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 actually.
Please let him speak. You, we gave you, we gave you time to speak, you had your, your thing, go ahead.
He missed my boy, but Act Two was done right before the sale, why wasn't it?
Actually, may I, look, some of us on this board are just finding out this information for the first time, so let me, but I, this only happened a few weeks ago. I need to hear from Mr. Panoni. I only need to, I need to hear from Mr. Panoni right now, and then I can hear from you. We've invited you up, and we'll invite you up again, but let Mr. Panoni speak.
Act, Act Two exists, and it's, and it was created decades ago to remediate environmental contaminated properties. Everything from the steel mill must have, refinery in the river to this property, which is, which is number two. Practical standpoint, the, a property owner goes in to remediate, remediates standards, and says, yes, we accept what you've done, and you've done a reasonably good, a good job of remediation. But by the way, that doesn't mean it's not possible to find something again. You can find contamination in, in, we're in an urban, suburban, urban community, you can find it. Once it's found, you remediate again. That's why the job stopped. The process, what do you respect, the process worked. It stopped. The houses aren't being built right now. The site's being further remediated because additional contamination was found. It's SOP, it's the way it's done. I mean, it's, it's very lively.
Mr. Panoni, does the Township have any jurisdiction over this?
I don't know what you mean by jurisdiction. That might be Jim's question better than, better than a question for me.
Well, what I mean is, can we, can we affect how the DEP deals with this? How quickly they deal with it? Can we, can we make decisions that countermand anything the DEP does?
Um, I'm gonna be a little careful, because I'm, I'm a technical guy. We could certainly look at decisions the DEP makes and concur or not concur, technically same. I mean, Commissioner Holmes, like, we could say, hey, DEP, we don't agree that it was remediated properly, or we do agree that it was remediated properly. Somebody has the ability to do that, whether we want to do it and is something different, and whether it means anything.
What I mean is, do I, does the DEP have to sign off on this thing being done?
No.
And they, and until they do?
It's like characterization report.
And they issue some kind of order, some kind of report after they're done with their analysis? Do they delegate that to Townships or to other entities, or does the DEP itself do that?
You mean by delegate, for them to do it, similar to like EPA delegates to DEP? No.
Exactly. Similar to like the feds will ask the state EPA to take it over, does the state EPA look to any local people to do these things? Okay. And I don't know the answers to these questions, and I'm, and you're educating me on this issue right now.
Good question, I mean, it's a good point.
Have we had similar issues with previous remediated sites where this kind of spot issue comes up, and there's been a flurry of activity, and then it's resolved itself?
Sure, absolutely. Look, I, I run scathing.
Right, and I'm asking, I'm assuming the answer to that question is yes, and part of it is to try to reassure folks that this is not abnormal.
But, you know, we are the government representing the constituents, no matter where they are in the Township. I would suggest, so that everything is clear and open, instead of doing this at the end of a meeting, have a special meeting, if we can get the DEP here, if we can get, if it's Greg Vitale here, thank you. We can get Greg Vitale here, the DEP, the residents. I mean, what's the harm in getting, having a special meeting and getting all the questions?
And the developer.
And the developer, getting all the questions answered? Everything's out in the open, we're, we're educated, you're there, Lori's there. I think we helped us both out, absolutely.
But it's 8:15, okay? We now have the luxury of looking at the clock at 8:15 and thinking it's late, okay? I mean, let's, let's have as much, let's learn as much information tonight.
Oh, I agree, I agree. We're not saying that. I think Commissioner Holmes agreed with it. We're not saying that. What we're saying is, let the residents, whoever you need to tell, to let them come at a meeting at 7 o'clock, have everybody else there.
Have more than three of them.
Right now, I want to know, right now, what I'm trying to find out is, who's got jurisdiction over this? So to what extent did anybody at the Township, if anybody at the Township dropped the ball? And I'm getting the, I'm, in terms of our Township officials and the folks who are in charge of dealing with these things, it sounds to me like it went properly to the DEP, and the DEP is dealing with it. And I also want people to understand the DEP, DEP does deal with this and has dealt with this before in the Township. I don't mean to suggest that this isn't a big deal. A quart of oil is a big deal, 2,000 gallons of oil is a big deal. Whatever it is, it's a big deal, but it's not unheard of for us to, for, for this situation to have arisen in this Township before, and for the DEP to have dealt with it.
And Commissioner Holmes, forgive me, and Mr. Panoni, you can probably address this. I believe the developer bought, bought that property, prior to settling on that property, had to have a Phase One and a Phase Two.
Yeah, I, I believe so too, and Lori's, I believe Lori's even seen him, and again, we even had the Act Two letter from the DEP and the follow-up information of 2012, which is certainly more up to date than, than the original stuff.
Okay.
Original remediation.
Right.
See, you know, my concern is we're talking about fish dying, although I understand you say, you say it's not related, but we want to make sure that's, I'm sorry?
Doesn't appear to be.
It doesn't appear, well.
Any EPA are investigating, they'll let us know for sure, but.
Right, but that's a concern. If it doesn't appear, and it's not definite, I would view that as a concern, have the DEP here.
Yeah, if we're having a special meeting, why don't we see if we can get the fish kill expert here too?
Yeah, get everybody here that we need to get here.
Get everybody here that should be here.
Well, it should be coordinated.
I'd like to know about the fish kill too.
Coordinated though, through Representative Vitale's office, because he was already there. And I know his office has to have all the latest information. I don't know if we want his office coordinated, we'll have the Township. We could, all right, then, they should, he should be included in it. Oh, absolutely. I wasn't saying no. He should be included. All the information he already has. We want to call the meeting, and he can attend when we want him to come, when the residents can make it.
Why don't we schedule for the next work session, or try to schedule for the next work sessions, if we can get the DEP people here?
The Tuesday after July 4th, I, I, let, let's do a special meeting.
And let's do a special meeting, absolutely.
All by itself. Yeah, I agree. Meeting all by itself, I think is the right way to go. Have as many residents.
And sooner the better.
As you can, yeah, I agree. This is something that I think, well, we are taken serious, as you could tell, and as Commissioner Holmes said, many of us have found out about this, at least I have, in the last couple of weeks, maybe three weeks. I'm sorry, but that's when I found out. I've heard some, I did get some information regarding it, but the more I'm hearing about it, the more concerned I am about it. So let's get the experts here, let's get the representative here, DEP, and the fish, fish experts, and let's get everything out in the open. Get all your questions asked, asked and answered, so you don't have to go through this back and forth, you're, you're here. Can we look at this towards the close of this month, the 30th?
But we are on.
We have to find out when the, the DEP people can be here.
We have to find out when these people are available.
Right, but while we're on TV right now, I mean, it is worth getting as many facts out there as we have.
I agree.
So I just want to repeat a few things. One, other than the initial discovery of whatever petroleum products people found that caused this product to, that caused this project to end, have there been any other discoveries? Any other, any other?
You mean the 30 days ago, where we excavated for food?
Right.
I don't know the answer to that.
Does Lori know the answer to that?
I know that in speaking with the developer, he plans on excavating some additional areas where the other foundations will go, and see if there's any issues. There haven't been any other samples taken that I'm aware of, but I'm not, yeah, I don't know what has been gathered. I know that the developer hired an environmental consultant and hired an attorney, Manuel Gold, to manage this project, and so the developer's doing what the developer does when a situation like this occurs.
Can, can these neighbors be told tonight, and the, and the TV audience be told tonight, to whom to report anything that they think they see? Whether they, on a particular day, they feel, they smell a very strong odor, whether on a particular day they find, you know, troubling issues in the creek with regard to fish or vegetation, or they see something pooling on, on standing water? I mean, is there, is there a person that they should be reporting to the Township? Who would then turn around and report to the DEP? Or should everything go directly to the, to the DEP? And who is that person to whom they should report that?
DEP maintains hotlines for the report of illicit discharges into the stream, and they advertise that number. They do. And they advertise that number.
Roll answers, call me, I'm at the Township. I would love to know if there's dead fish.
Sir? You've had time to talk, now, please, allow her to talk.
I can give you an answer, but I would like to be able to finish without the sarcasm. All right.
It wasn't sarcastic.
It is.
There was no sarcasm.
Completely sarcastic. The DEP maintains numbers also for illegal dumping. So any soils contamination, any air pollution, they have separate departments for air quality, water quality, and they do have a hotline, and I believe we have the hotline number on the township website as well, to report illicit discharges under our storm waters.
I'm, I'm looking for that right now, because I don't want to shut this camera off without saying what that number is. Is there?
I'm happy to sit down, hold up, and, and give you that information.
Yeah, I'm looking for it right now. And what about, is this, is this now a pro, is this now, is this identified to the DEP as a particular project with a particular name or number, so that somebody calls and they're not looking for the person to call about a bad smell, the person to call about a dead fish, or the person to call about, you know, petroleum products on top of water? It's just someone to call about the problem in this area? Is there a, is there, is there a project they should reference when they call somebody?
I would be happy to reach out to the gentleman who was the liaison who sent the email to the Township, saying that there was going to be a process that in 180 days, developer was required to submit these samples for, that had been analyzed for their review, and I'll reach out to him and find out if there's a project manager that's godfathering this.
Yeah, or, or a project, a title to this thing, so that any one of these folks call and say, there's a problem in Havaford, and whether or not they give their address, or that's related to the creek, as opposed to the, as opposed to the, the, the trail, or anywhere else, it goes directly to the person who's accumulating information about this problem. If we could, if we could put that on our, on our website, do we still scroll stuff across the bottom of our?
Yep, good point.
Of the, what's our, what's our channel?
Cable channel.
Yeah, we have the scroll back.
Varies on Comcast, Verizon.
So on either of those channels, if we can run the scroll that just says the DEP hotline for, you know, is such and such a number, you know?
Yeah, we can move that to the front page, DEP's number.
And folks know who to talk to.
You can always call the Township, and the Township will give you that number, or we will contact the DEP ourselves, or you can call your Commissioner, and he will contact the Township. Okay? That's always, that's always an avenue for you, if there's anything wrong, you can always call the Township, and the Township will direct you to the, to the correct, to the correct department or who to call. We're just trying to speed the process for you. So rather than making two or three phone calls, you make one, and that's all we're trying to do here.
I would suggest that because DEP's gonna want to speak to the person who's reported the issue, whatever it was, a fish kill, odors, or whatever, that the residents contact them directly, because you can relay your firsthand experience.
Oh, they can.
Okay. So any, I have a number for our county, Delaware County, from the DEP, is 484-250-5900. It is monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, to dispatch response personnel to any emergency or incident within the DEP's jurisdiction. Now, we know already that this whole issue is in the DEP's jurisdiction. So 484-250-5900. And I imagine that right now it's the only thing under investigation in Havaford Township, so say it's the thing in Havaford Township on Harvard Road or Washington, where it is.
No, but I, I agree with you, Larry. It should have, I would think, it has a specific file name.
Yeah, it's gotta have some specific identifying number, but.
If Lori could find that, that'd be great.
Don't, don't have that hold anybody back from making a report of something they're concerned about. I mean, some mornings may be worse than others, some day, maybe the day you see the thing that, and, and these things by nature are ephemeral, you know? You might see something in the morning that by noon isn't there. Take a photo of it, you know? Yeah, yeah, we've all now, we can't do anything without getting our pictures taken. So take, take a photo of vegetation you don't like, or a film that you see across the top of standing water, or a concern that you have. Share it with us, but share it with the DEP. It's much better for the DEP to get your version of what you saw than to get my version of what you saw after I've translated it from you to them. And if it goes through two or three of us before it gets there, then it's just not going to be the same.
If.
Okay. Dave?
If they wouldn't mind.
Is there any other? You have a question, you wanted to ask a question? Come on up, just, just come up here, please. So the camera picks you up.
540 Washington, Tom Booth. I invite anyone here, any of the Commissioners that's come down to my property, or Dave's, look at the backyard, you'll see the footings within 30 yards off the corner of my property, which have been filled up with three, four-foot of water, I said earlier, they pumped that all out. But if you look at, at the side of the footings, you'll see where they brought, filled dirt in, put over top of McAdam, which they said was, they were okay to do that. You have old-school blacktop McAdam, which is eight inches of stone blacktop, and 12 inches of battlement stone back in the 50s. This, this property was good days road paving back in 1926, 1936. That's old-school mentality when they made roads, not like they make it today where they make them safe. You're using kerosene, coal tar, using all kind of contaminants. I invite you guys to come down, look for my property, look in the, the side cut of the footings, and see the tar that's oozing out of the footings coming out of the old road that was there, they filled over top of. I know if I was paying $600,000 for a home, the one behind me is a hundred, is a million-dollar home. His basement, or his foundation, is next to eight inches of McAdam, old-school McAdam, 12 inches of battlement stone, which is full of oil and stone, which they're gonna 12 inches of battlement stone, which is full of oil and stone, which they're going to just fill over with, fill dirt and put their basement walls up, put a vapor barrier in. I wouldn't want to pay a million dollars or, or $600,000 for a house. And now in my front yard is buried under two foot of stuff. I'm going to grow tomato plants or whatever I'm going to try and grow. How do I know it's not going to kill me down the road? I mean, you have to see it. Again, I invite anybody here to come to my property.
I would like to, I would like to see it if, if you guys have some time tomorrow evening.
Well, actually, we, we should set up something where, where the whole board goes down.
That's fine. I, I, that's fine.
If you get on, on the property, it's even more a good site. If you can see from my property.
I'm tied up tomorrow. I'd like to go maybe Thursday before that.
I'm sure you, you wouldn't have a problem. We could set something up where we could walk.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't mean to interrupt, but you do have to be careful about the sunshine laws and things if you're going to.
You mentioned the 800 number for the DEP. We did call that. The night that it rained, the footing's filled up with water, that sewer, an old sewer that's been there for, for the, since the 50s, I know has been fractured. They cemented, the EPA cemented one end so the water wouldn't get in from the footing into the creek. But all the, the heavy equipment they've had on top of that, that drain, I know it's fractured because you look at the other end where the heavy rain comes out, that contaminated water is now coming out the other end of the pipe.
All right, now you're using terms of art here. You're saying sewer. You're talking about stormwater?
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Don't even use the word sewer. Since that's our sanitary lines and we don't have an issue over there with that.
Make that correction, yes. It's storm, stormwater.
Stormwater, okay.
Right. It's an old existing drain that was on the McAdam side of the property, maybe good roads paving, whoever had it. It's an 18-inch round storm drain that it's, has to be fractured because the other end that's in the footing is all cemented up. But the next 50 feet that goes to the creek, you look when it get a heavy rain, it's coming out, going into the creek. And I always thought that's a no-no, isn't it? I mean, especially that property. I mean, you've got oil laying on the ground over there, you have tar laying on the ground. It's got to be getting into that storm drain.
Okay.
Called 800 number, nobody came out. I talked to Robert, Rebecca Flynn, I think it was.
Yeah.
That, the following morning. She didn't come out.
We'd like to, no, I would like to come out tomorrow evening. We're trying to get, see if any other members, we, you just said about the sunshine law.
We can get four.
No, I, I get it. And so if anybody could join us, are you guys available tomorrow? You have a meeting, Chris, at 5:30?
At 5:15.
About seven? Seven, okay.
Like they asked of the township, did they have any pressure on having them remove, the builder removed that drain line from the footing, the foundation to the creek? It's 50-foot of pipe, 18-inch round. Can't they remove that so it doesn't get, have any, any chance of getting into the creek?
This is, we can't micromanage.
I want you to come up to the microphone so people in the audi, people at home can hear. We can look at that. Okay. Jim, you want to say something?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't commit ourselves to anything without, without having known what the whole.
Well, I don't know what we just committed to.
Well, you didn't commit to anything except looking at it. That's.
You'd like to look at, that's all.
I think the way the question was posed, can't you, it was, can't you make them do something? And I did, that was.
Okay. We can't, we can't make the DEP do anything. We can suggest to them.
Yeah.
We've hopefully, if anyone, I'd like to go. I think Chris has expressed the desire to go tomorrow evening around 7:00. If two other commissioners want to join us, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, we can do that after.
The queen of heaven and earth is graduating from Cardinal Foley tomorrow night. I will not.
I, congratulations, Commissioner. I understand.
I work tomorrow evening, so I will not be there either.
Fine.
As will, as will Commissioner McGarrett's granddaughter, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go over it after the, after the meeting's over. If that's all right, if you can hang out till, till the meeting's over, can you, can you? Yeah. Just hang out with us and then we can work something out where, where the commissioners can meet and, and set up a time. You want to speak?
Yeah, real quick.
Sure.
I don't know how, you know, somebody, this would have said, like, how you can say something that's much ado about nothing. Like, based on what? Like.
I'm going to say that based on the information that I received from Rich Rupert from the EPA, who said that there's less than a quart of oil, and he feels that this is an isolated area, that was the information that I received from the EPA because apparently the residents contacted the EPA hotline first.
Right.
So that was the call that was made. It wasn't to DEP. So my communication has been with Rich Rupert from the EPA.
Right. And he's not said it's much ado about nothing, so.
He's told her that.
Okay.
It's just something he said to her.
No, because she released something, there, you know, there was the article in the paper. I mean, everything we did from the press and everything else has been because of non-response from the township, you know? No offense to you all, but we made phone calls to people that were supposed to be phone calls in the ward, including this, what, Mr. McGarrett. Didn't hear anything. So then that's when we started kind of reaching out and doing what we did. And then we kind of got hand slapped about going to the paper. The builder then lobbed, you know, supposedly some legal at the paper. You know, it, it's starting to look funny. What started out as, you know, really a, you know, us being dismissed a couple of years ago, we came here and said that we thought, you know, for that big of a house, you know, six, it's not about the price tag, but about the size of the house, to only be 25 feet from our back, you know, backyards. And if you're paying that kind of money, if I'm them, I sure as hell like to be able to put a back porch or a deck on. They're not going to be able to as close as they are now, you know? So that's what started all this. And it was a real dismissive attitude, you know? And now, then it led to, you know, I've only lived here 10 years, but finding out what was on the property, we've done a history lesson, it's kind of amazing what you'll find out was back there. Atlantic Refining Company. What was the other one? Ford Oil, Philadelphia Synthetic Gas, kind of scary stuff. It's not much ado about nothing. And I find it really interesting. You tend to recuse yourself from certain things, but you sure as hell make a press release to the paper and to, and to everyone else.
All right.
But that's okay. We got, we got our legal too.
Look, we, we're doing all we can. We'll go out to the property, we'll make sure the DEP is looking at this. I promise you that we'll be, we'll do whatever we can. Again, DEP is a state, is a state, and we have no jurisdiction over them. It's just like we're having issues with PennDOT. Every state road's got potholes all over it. And if it was up to me, they'd all be paved. But they're their roads and they have to take care of them and, and, and they're, you know, we have no authority over, over them.
EPA and DEP have an actually great tool. It just takes a while.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Levin wants to speak.
Clarification on this, um, found trail under item 16.
It was ta, the item was tabled.
What is 406, uh, $428,000 being used for? What kind of a road is this? Is this a trail? What kind of a trail? Is it concrete? Is it asphalt?
Asphalt.
The item was tabled.
I don't care where the money is coming from, but I, I do care about whether or not this is a trail that looks like a trail that is through woods as opposed to something else that is being built. Now, I gather that you tabled this because of this contamination.
No, that's, absolutely not.
That is not true. The reason why it was tabled.
Can I answer that question?
Go ahead.
Yes. Absolutely not. I asked the board to table this at the beginning of the meeting because we're actually going back to the Delaware, Delaware Valley Regional Planning and asking for additional funds to fund more of the grant. It has nothing to do with the potential, that, that site's already been, we already did borehole testings there. It is going to be a McAdam, blacktop trail identical to the Murray Place, same width, same dimensions.
What's the width?
End.
10 feet.
10 feet?
And it's extensively described with the entire bid in the agenda tonight so that if you had simply read the letter in the agenda, it's there.
Okay, we can get you that information, okay? I'll get you the letter.
Seems expensive.
Okay.
And has it been put to a, has it been put to the residents in that area that this is what they indeed want?
This was done in 2014.
Yeah, there's a trail there already. Yeah, we've gone through this.
This was a grant that was approved in 2014.
Long time ago. A year, how long has it been?
2014. It was a grant from the William Penn Foundation for $425,000. And that's where its genesis is. The, it's, it's extensively described minutely in the agenda, including the costs of every aspect of it.
Okay.
So it's there.
All right, we'll get you that information.
And, and let me add one more thing.
Okay.
Every single publicly bid job in this township, there's a set of detailed bid documents on file in Larry's office. Which any resident, any bidder and any resident can come in and obtain and look at. Without having to purchase, they can actually look at them right there. That's, that's required that this township does have and do it every single job we bid.
Okay. All right. And, oh, yeah, sure, come on up. Okay.
All right, let's see, I'll be right.
Come on up. You have to come up here and tell us your, uh.
Yes.
Yeah. You're going to be on, you're going to be on camera.
You're the star.
Don't be nervous, it's just a couple thousand people watching you, that's all.
So we are here, many.
Name and address.
Alice Room, Fort Orchard Road.
Okay.
In the third ward, I'm happy to say, and we are here tonight with neighbors, and there were many who could not come that wanted to come, Jane, to just express their gratitude to you for all you've done, your many years of service to the community, just with a great enthusiasm and openness, whether you were on this side or that side, you were open to listening to everybody's problems. And I think we were all better off as a community, you know, with you as one of its leaders. We really are appreciative and grateful and just want to applaud your work and your efforts that you've done throughout the years. U.S. Open, unbelievable, right? I mean, the world watched and our community looked spectacular. And living in that neighborhood, it was fun, there was no problems, right? We were all worried, what are we going to do with all this traffic? Who's going to plant those flowers so it looks nice? It was all beautifully done and I, kudos to you because I think you were a great liaison between Marion and the community and, you know, the economic development, which we, you know, has been going on forever, to come in with some vision to bring us forward, to try to keep up with all the adjacent townships that, you know, to keep this a wonderful place to live. So I thank you.
I'd like to add, she saved the township from Walgreens in the corner. She did a phenomenal job updating the SEPTA station down at Artmore Park. That was all, Jane Hall.
Go ahead, sir.
My name's Kenny Lindstrom, 2564 Rosemont Ave. Lived here for four years, selling my house. I just want to give a case study of how expensive it is to sell your house with the curb and backflow. It's only four years. When I bought the house, the seller said to replace about 10 feet of curb and sidewalk sections. And now a quick four years later, it's about 130 feet of curb and no sidewalk sections. But there's a backflow prevention device on plumbing now. So the curb comes to $3,600 to $4,300 and the backflow is between $1,800 and $4,800 to sell my house. So I would ask you to relook at this. I do have a corner property, so I'm kind of getting doubled up on this sidewalk. This is two months stay home salary for your median, median income in Haverford. So it's a ton of money and it's not, not like kids are going to play on these curbs for years to come and love and enjoy them. It's just kind of like a lot of money to spend on something that is still structurally sound, they're still there. The reveal is maybe two inches in some places instead of four, but it's just a ton of money and it's kind of, sort of, because you just have to do it to sell your house. So you have to spend the money and not money that you budget for your move. You know, you have to deal with the seller's request, but then to also have a $7,000 bill from the township for curbs that in most townships aren't your own property, that a township property is just a huge burden and an unexpected burden on the residents. So I would expect that if the township owned all the curbs, they wouldn't place the same requirements or hold them to the same standards as that they're holding their own residents to. That's all.
Dr. Levin, you have already spoken this evening twice.
Twice.
Three times.
I don't consider a 10-foot wide McAdam.
We've already spoken.
Is that going to be plowed in the winter time? That will take a long deal.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you going to new business now?
Uh, new business.
May I bring something up on new business? Please.
I have, go ahead. You can go first.
Go ahead.
Sorry, buddy, no, you.
No, go ahead.
The police have asked me to bring up a resolution and it's actually for the DUI checkpoints.
Okay.
And it was supposed to be on the agenda and mistakenly was put off, so would you mind?
Go ahead.
So officially, do I need to ask this board?
You need to add it to the agenda.
First, I have to add it to the agenda.
Move it on to the agenda first.
Okay, I respectfully ask this board if we can move this on the agenda. Resolution 1980-2016.
Go ahead, you got it? 1980?
I'm sorry?
2014?
To what?
Move it to.
What's the resolution?
You have to give us the title or something. Okay, it, it, there's no title. It just says, "Resolution 198016, be it resolved by Authority Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, that the Township Manager Lawrence Gentili of said municipality be authorized to sign the attached agreements on its behalf." So I believe, Chief, it's for the agreements for the DUI checkpoints that we're going to.
It's a yearly resolution that allows Mr. Gentili to sign any documents for DUI checkpoints so we can proceed with them. It's, it's a funding issue. It's just to allow the grant to move forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. All right, we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Can we do it all in favor?
Yeah. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none. Carries?
Thank you.
Now you can read the resolution.
Oh.
I will vote on the resolution. We voted to just put it on.
Okay. Be resolved by Authority Board of Commissioners, Township of Haverford, Delaware County, and is hereby resolved by authorities saying that the Township Manager Lawrence Gentili of said municipality authority be authorized to sign the attached agreements on its behalf. And it's by Lawrence Gentili, Township Manager, Mary Oliva, President. And it says.
Have to read that part. That's good.
You have to read that part.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Please call the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Herr Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva, I'd like to make a request to add a contract award to the agenda for this evening. As you know, the Steering Committee has met over the last several months. They've reviewed proposals for construction management firms and narrowed the field and came forth with a recommendation. I'd like permission to add the contract approval to the agenda.
Billy, you left out one detail. Construction manager for what?
For the municipal services building.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Chris Connell?
Who?
Chris seconded it. Okay, by voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none.[1577.73]
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Reynolds Construction LLC of Wayne, Pennsylvania, as the onsite construction management firm for Hereford Township to provide the construction management services project for the new municipal services building. The amount of the contract being $347,000. $347,700.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Lori, would you like to speak about this process?
I would. The township issued a request for proposals in this matter to hire a professional for construction management services. The township has already hired a design team. And now, we need somebody to do the management of the site during the construction, work with the architect on the pre-construction documents, including the preparation of the bid documents. This is a multi-prime job. It's prevailing wages. The project involves the construction of a 43,000-square-foot combined police and township administration building at Darby and Manoa Road, which is the site of the current police department. The steering committee received 12 responses to the solicitation. It narrowed the field to five. It interviewed the five and made a recommendation to hire Reynolds Construction.
Okay. And this was because it's a...
This got in the executive session.
An executive session. Because it's a personnel issue.
You can ask for any public comment if you'd like.
Public comment?
Since you're voting on a new issue, you should see if there's any public comment on it.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
Where's Doc Levin?
Oh, he left him.
He left.
Okay. Well, he could have talked again.
Okay. There being no public comment? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, to Reynolds Construction.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes, to Reynolds.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
And Mr. Aliva? Yes. Any other new business?
Mr. President, all I wanted to address you, sir, and I apologize, I did not write down your name. Yes, Ken. We have discussed the curbing and the use and occupancy transfer certificate several times during my term. I will, I shall endeavor to discuss it again before I leave. I think it's something that, I can tell you that I have had five phone calls Monday, Tuesday of this week. And I have visited many properties. I understand it's just an issue that we are struggling with because it really is, and I say this truly, that we've looked at it over and over and over again, it's a hard issue to address. We do need to replace the curbing in the township. It has been at point of sale always. Whether we can do better with that, I think we can, but we're, we've been working on it. And I will bring it up one more time before I leave office and see...
Just one more?
Maybe, maybe twice.
Okay.
I had to do the minutes over today for like two hours trying to find when it changed.
Okay. If you want, if you want to speak, we can come up here.
But we can't keep having dialogue.
Yeah, we're having, we can't have dialogue back and forth.
Yeah. I just, go ahead.
So, I looked through all the comments. I saw initially there was a kind of an option if you're a corner property that, like, corner property's got an exception where you just did like one side, the major side.
Well, it's really not about that, but I'm happy, if you give me your phone number, I'm happy to call and discuss the whole thing with you. No, it's not a problem at all. I'm happy to do it.
I wanted to address it as well because I, since 2001, when I, when we passed it, when we, I wasn't on this board, but I happened to be at the meeting at 1:45 a.m. when they passed an ordinance about the curbs back then. And it's been my view my entire time on this board that the township is better, is better off doing it, it's better off regulating it, doing it when they do the streets. One of the chief complaints of our residents is that they, the wear and tear to their curbs isn't a consequence at all of anything they do, but instead a consequence of the remilling of the roads. And frankly, it is often in the eyes of the inspector as to whether or not the curb satisfies that inspector's standard that day. And that's not a shot at our inspectors, they're human beings, just like every one of us. So, they're going to be subject to whatever their eyesight reveals to them that day or whatever stands out differently from their, from their neighbors. I have asked Township Manager Gentili in the past whether or not, whether or not I'm correct that economies of scale would kick in and we would get cheaper price per curb if we did it on larger, you know, in a larger scale than, than, you know, the regular citizens can. That information has not come back conclusively. We've gotten information that it would be no less expensive for us to do it on a larger scale because of how small our neighborhoods are, because of how many cuts there are for driveways and, and other things in most of our neighborhoods, which are very small. But even if the costs are the same, it's still my view that this should really be a township issue and not a homeowner issue. But understand that just means we will transfer the cost from each individual homeowner to pay for their curb to the township to then pass on to every homeowner the cost of handling all the curbs. So, if there is no cost saving in the project, it's really just going to be a cost shifting mechanism from taxes to the check you write for purposes of selling your house or buying your house. But that said, I do think it is like trash collection and road repair, something that belongs in the hands of the township and should be the responsibility of the township. Until we make that change, you're going to have the situation that you face, as will other people in the township. And I'll continue to suggest that we take it on. And, you know, hopefully, one day, we do. But as of right now, unfortunately, we've got to go with the, we have to enforce the codes with the ordinances that we've passed. But to the extent that, that curbs, you know, should pass inspection, they're not very old, they haven't broken, or, or they've broken, but they've broken because a plow has hit them or something else has happened that's somebody else's responsibility, certainly bring it to our attention, bring it to the township's attention. But I hope this board will seriously consider whether or not we want to make this a township, township task.
Okay. Anything else on new business? All right.
I would like to talk to you after the meeting about that backflow issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an issue.
Other business?
Nothing other than tomorrow evening, I think you gentlemen agree to, I think around 7:00 p.m. We'll...
As long as there's enough daylight and you get permission to get all the time.
Summertime, there's plenty of daylight.
Well, yeah. People at home can't hear him and the thing, so please just repeat it.
Okay. So...
Steve, how did you, I mean, come about tomorrow evening? Because, you know, a couple of us, like Larry and myself, our grandkids are graduating.
No, no, we're going to have, we're going to have several.
Well, my grandkids.
There's going to be several because you can only have four.
Okay. Well, I just want you to understand that that's why I won't be there. I mean, because of that.
No, we, yeah, I'm sorry.
Need a little time there.
Going to be more meetings, Jim.
We talked about it. And when we talked about it, we said that all nine of us couldn't go when they asked us to go. So, we said we'll split it up. I mean, you know, for any reason. I understand graduations.
Again, after, after the meeting, we'll discuss what, what...
But before you guys leave, if I can get your name and numbers so I can call you.
Okay.
If you write it down, just give it to me and it'd be great.
Anything else?
No. I'm good. Thanks.
Commissioner Hall?
I'd just like to say for the third ward and the sixth ward, Merwood Civic Association is having a July 4th celebration. On the third, they're having an open block party on Cherry Lane that starts at 7:00 p.m. And then, on the fourth, they have their traditional July 4th celebration with parade games. And they, they have a map that you can see on their website if you would like to. I'd also like to thank Larry Gentili again and express to the board that I believe that this air conditioning system that we've addressed is, you know, another just validation of how much, you know, we need to renovate our library. So, I'd like to thank Larry for working with Christine on that. I also, if you would indulge me for one moment, I would like to thank the residents of the third ward and the residents of Hereford Township and this Board of Commissioners and this outstanding administrative staff for allowing me to serve here the last three and a half years. I will not be in the general election this fall, but I will be a commissioner until the end of the year. And from now until December, I will do my very, very, very best work for this Board of Commissioners and for this township to make responsible decisions and to move forward with all the positive initiatives that I have tried to put forth and, and put in place over the last several years. It has been my absolute pleasure to work with this township and with this board and this administrative staff. And Jim Byrne, you have been wonderful to me and I appreciate it. And the police and the public works, you have all been absolutely wonderful. I hope to remain in community service in the future. I'm not going away. We have a wonderful township. I feel incredibly privileged to live here. I've been here for 32 years with my family and amazing friends that I've made, a lot of them my neighbors that are here this evening. And it means so much to me. I truly, my, my heart is full. Please know how much I appreciate this experience and I can never express how much I have learned from all you incredible people that have given me so much over the last three and a half years. I look forward to working with you over the next six months and hopefully into the future for good things for this township.
Can I change seats tonight?
A fact of life.
Sure.
It's hard to get me speechless. But no, I, I had not planned on saying anything tonight because you have many more meetings. You have approximately, I think, 11 more scheduled meetings with this board. What I will say is, and this is something I think Commissioner Aliva says as President and something that I've seen and I've discovered with the board, or at least the vast majority of the board. When, when you were running for election and when we first met, I think you and I were skeptical of each other, as many of us are of our colleagues, until you get to know and work with them. And whether you and I have agreed and we have at times strongly disagreed, we have done so amicably and realized that our disagreements are political and not personal. And I am thrilled to count you as a friend and someone who I trust and respect very much. So, I want to just thank you. I just want to move on to a couple more mundane things, but they do address sort of communication issues. I am pleased to announce for those who get, who are, get my newsletters, that they will shortly also be in a mobile format so that they will be fully accessible on mobile devices, not just easily read on your computers. My newsletters, the next one will be my 150th email communication as a commissioner in seven years. And they have now reached 100,000-plus recipients over that time. I believe it's really important that we communicate. My commissioner website, for those who use it, is now completely mobile friendly. I've added a Facebook page and will continue to do what I can to make certain that I and the township, which has been working through the cable channel and others, that we are communicating on both the traditional means and have moved fully into the 21st century and using all of that technology, which I believe is essential for elected officials. And in that vein, my commissioner website will shortly hit 150,000 hits, which I think is, I'm shocked from what started out as a small website. So, I thank the residents who have given me suggestions and encouraged it. And I look forward, you know, I've suggested in the future and I know that we've considered it, that the township continue to do more to communicate electronically because I think it's so important. And I've worked with Mr. Gentili and I know we'll do more. But thank you for that.
Does it count when 140,000 of those hits are Commissioner D'Amelio getting stuff from you?
I was just going to say something about, about me being probably about 40,000, but I check Dance site regularly. It's a great site. I'd just like to report that the Cooper Town 4th of July will be held, actually, 4th of July parade last should be held on July 1st, which I believe is a Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. It will start at 6:00 o'clock at the corner of Clemson and Deer with the parade, which will then move down toward Rodney, then up, back up to the Cooper Town School where we'll have a band and games and, and a picnic and all that. So, 6:00 on Tuesday, July 1st will be the Cooper Town Parade. Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. I, I'll save till December my weepy discussion of working with Commissioner Hall. I don't think I can top Mrs. Vroom or Mrs. Hall or my colleagues tonight, except to say that I'm going to enjoy these next six months. I'm going to enjoy seeing you get things done where there's no political stake and you'll just be doing what you've been doing all along, which is putting the township ahead of your own interests. So, I'll enjoy these six months. I've enjoyed the 42 months before that. And, and I will look forward to them and I'll sorry, I'll be sorry to see them end.
Thanks.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Commissioner McGarretty?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Number one, the Grange for the 4th of July. I think, Chris, are we still looking for some young people to get involved?
Yes.
Okay. We're still looking for young people in the seventh or eighth wards to get involved, help run that, the 4th of July. It's been going on for 50 years, so we're hoping that somebody will step up to the plate. Heritage Festival was a great success on Caricon Drive. I think there was more there this year than ever and it was mobbed down there. The Grange Estate, basically, they had a, an old wagon there from 1900 that it seemed like a lot of interested historic and historical people were checking that out and they really, really enjoyed that. And they got it down there and it was a great success for the Grange. And that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Wexler?
Thank you. I'll echo the silence about Ms. Hall. It's, it's nice to always get the woman's perspective when we're in our committee meetings. It's something I'm used to with a wife and four daughters, but now I get it, I'm going to miss it at the commissioner level as well. So, but we'll, we'll talk over the next six months, as Commissioner Holmes said. I have two things. The Hilltop Civic Association is sponsoring a movie night at Steel Field on Saturday, June the 20th. Festivities begin about 7:45. They'll have snacks and glow necklaces and it's a fun night. Last year, we had about 400 or 500 kids show up. It's a great family evening to enjoy with your, on a Saturday evening, outside movie. So, please come. You don't have to live in Hilltop or with the ninth ward to attend. Steel Field is a huge venue and everyone is welcome in the township. And then, also, Hilltop Civic sponsors the 4th of July parade in conjunction with the Bon Air Fire Company. And that will be the morning of July 4th, typically starting around 9:00 o'clock and marching off around 10:00 down to Steel Field. I'm fortunate, my ward, Tim Denny lives there and he's, has been the chairman and the chief bottle washer of that parade for the last, I don't know how many years, Tim, you've been running it with your, with your whole family. It's a, it's a great, great tradition. I remember decorating my bike and putting the cards and the spokes when I was a young lad and, and the kids still do it. And I'll tell you, and I'll echo Debbie Sapola's words.
Was Tim there for that?
Yeah. It was just, it's just a lot of family fun. The kids love it. So, please join us on the morning of July 4th at the Bon Air Fire Company. And that's all I have, Mr. Aliva.
All right. Commissioner Connell?
Jane, 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 Jane. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. But definitely kudos for the services that you provided. And I appreciate very much supporting me on the Stormwater runoff, which you had from the beginning. And thank you very much for your services and look forward for the next six months. I, I know you won't give up working 100% like you always do. Sunday, June 14th is Flag Day. So, everybody, please, fly your flag. How proud to put it out on your front doorstep or whatever. Had memorial ceremony this past year. And I read through where there were 41 million Americans that gave their life for this country since the, since the time that we became a country. And for one day, just to put your flag out there, it just seems to be, you know, what a shame. So, fly it every day. It's a beautiful flag and especially this, the 14th. Please put it out. Congratulations to the class, Hereford Class of 2015. Mr. Pononi, congratulations, the last one out the door, huh? Good. Now, and of course, college. So, congratulations to all our graduates out there. School is out, so please be very, very careful when driving on the streets. Those neighborhood streets become playgrounds. They were when I was a kid growing up. We did everything in the street. We played ball in the street. We ran in the street, everything. We got in trouble in the streets. But so, please, when you drive down the street and the speed limit is 25, 20, 15, whatever the case may be, please do the speed limit or below it because there are kids that play there. It's a deer crossing, D-E-A-R. Let's see, recycling, I think that may be all that I have. And yes, 4th of July, anybody, the Grange is having their 4th of July this year on the 4th, as we always do. We absolutely need some volunteers, especially with the young families, to carry on, you know, the tradition of passing the torch. Please, contact me or you can contact Mr. McGarretty of the seventh ward, but please, give me a call. Each person has a little job, really, a little job. And it's, it's only the morning, you know? It's, it's great fun. So, please contact me in reference to the 4th of July. Everybody be safe and see you next month.
All right. Thank you, Chris.